Good to go.
All right, thanks.
Are you on though? Are you, are we on?
Okay, this is on, so, okay.
Yeah, we're blue now.
Okay.
Hey, well, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have met compliance with the official notification of this meeting. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not considered to be a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by completing a public comment sign-in sheet and handing it to the deputy clerk and up front here. Comments should be focused on the items being considered by the board and should be restricted to no more than three minutes in length. With that, a call for the roll call.
Steve Volz.
Here.
Brooke Taylor.
Here.
Myself.
Steve Stupack.
Here.
Laura Gabbsky.
Here.
Mike Meyer.
Here.
And President Albrecht is excused as soon.
Yeah, thank you. Our first item tonight is the report of, a report from our superintendent.
All right, I have a handful of items this evening. The first item, every fall, I share with the board annual professional goals as well as an action plan to meet those professional goals as part of my superintendent evaluation. So, this is just one part of the process. In this, in the summer, I do a self-assessment based on different areas of competency. I also surveyed the board to get feedback from the board on areas to concentrate for growth. I develop these each spring or each fall, and then in the spring, I get specific feedback from each of the board members and share that as part of my, and then that comes together as part of my overall annual evaluation, but this is a part of that. And so, just briefly to share with you, goals I put together based on your feedback and that self-assessment, two goal areas I'd like to focus on primarily this year is around continuing to reach 100% of our students graduating college and career-ready from Superior High School within four, within four years. You can see there's some of the action steps that my leadership and role would support in meeting that goal. And then the second page outlines a second goal, and I've provided this to the board already to, to take a look at, so hopefully this isn't the first time you're seeing this. Really looking to improve communication and community relationships, ultimately improving relationships between and among board members, superintendent, staff, parents, and community, improving communication and deeper trusting relationships between superintendent and board, administration and staff, and community and schools. And so, you can see some of those action steps and areas for those evidence. So, I don't know if you have any questions or feedback?
Do we know what last year's grad rates were yet? I'm gonna talk about that soon.
All right, yeah, it was, I, I will share that in my last presentation. Yep, perfect.
Dr. Starzaki, one of the things that we talked a lot about was ensuring that our restorative practice was the full gamut, right? Like, consequences and restorative practices. And maybe that's not a part of your annual goals and action, action plan, I misunderstood, but I just wanted to make sure that we continue on with that, or if that's completed at this point.
Let me just see if I have. So, the last bullet on here, continue to provide training and support to build a robust social-emotional learning model and building on a foundation of strong relationships between staff and students, students and students and staff and staff. Restorative practice training would continue to be.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
PBIS work, yep.
Yeah, thank you.
And we're continuing to do that training as part of our shared leadership teams. Yep. Do you have a feedback?
We all gave you the feedback to get.
Hang on, I just wanna make sure I captured your feedback. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have two principals. We have Kim O'Donnell here from Four Corners, who's going to share an update on all the things happening at Four Corners so far this school year. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you, good evening.
Thank you.
Feels just like last spring, I was standing up here, time goes.
You probably were.
My best. Just to kinda share some highlights with you, we have had a fantastic start to the school year. Things feel really good from the first day of school. It was almost like one of those surreal things where you're, wow, everything feels really good and it's kinda humming like clockwork. And so, we've had a good start. We've done a lot of learning in the building around PBIS. We've already run our kids through our first tier-one expectations, so you know, what does it look like in the hallway, on the playground, in the cafe? And we continue to revisit those things as needed. I would say the first probably two weeks of school, it was an every single day thing. Okay, so let's talk about, what does this look like? What does this feel like? What does it sound like? And the kids are doing a great job. Some of the other things, we were fortunate enough to have a good cohort of teachers attend the responsive classroom training that the district helped, and they came back so excited and fired up about all these things that they wanted to do. And so, they've been sharing those things that they learned with our staff at staff meetings and at the beginning of the year meeting that we had. And one of the things that I'm really proud of is every single classroom at this point is having a morning meeting with their kids that's guided, that has expectations around it for the kids, and then they all have a closing circle at the end of the day, which is, it's really pretty cool to walk around and, and see, you know, kids talking about how their day was and what, you know, what their peak was and what their pit was and, and what their goal is for the next day. It's, it's really awesome. Overall, like I said, the kids are happy to be back. Our staff is happy to be back and there's just, it just feels good. There's a lot of positive energy this year. And one of the fun things that I think I talked about last spring and continues this year is our third grade classes have started their Wonder Wednesday, which is like a STEM and engineering-focused afternoon. So, every Wednesday for an hour, they have some sort of engineering problem that they're tackling. And it's really teaching the kids problem-solving skills, collaboration, critical thinking, all of those things that we know, we've heard, you know, that's what the workforce is looking for. They're looking for people that can problem-solve and work together and communicate clearly. And so, this week, their job was to build paper towers out of newspaper that would hold a certain amount of weight, and it was really interesting to listen to the kids even this early in the year to problem-solve, what does this look like? And talking about, well, what do we need to do? And they've done some research, you know, looking at building structures and, well, you know, is a triangle stronger than a square? And what do we need to do to have supports? And it's, it's pretty amazing. So, if you ever get an opportunity to come out on a Wednesday afternoon, please come out, because it's quite a thing to see. And I get to do Wonder Wednesday with them this week, so I get to bring out my science teacher chops for a day, which feels good. A couple of other things, our PTA, of course, out there is amazing, and they have been working double-time to get things rolling already this school year and get some things planned. So, we've got the Cable Natural History Museum coming out next week, and they do a presentation in each classroom. They've got a set, I don't wanna call it curriculum, but like a set sequence of things that they talk about with different grade levels. So, by the time the kids get through fifth grade, they've, you know, talked about spiders and snakes and predators and prey and ecosystems and all these cool things. And that's one of the things that our PTA has, has done for us for as long as I've been at Four Corners. We've got our Fall Fest coming up, October 15th, which is always a big hit and a great fail engagement opportunity. And then, something we're doing a little bit different. So, in years past, we've had artists in residence or scientists in residence in the spring. Last year, we had folks from the Lake Superior Estuarium come out and did some things with our kids on the trail and did water quality and whatnot. This year, we are bringing in a person from the cities who's a singer-songwriter, and he's gonna come in December instead of in the spring. And so, what this individual does, and, and our family engagement coordinator and I have met with him, is he will come in and work with the kids on writing original lyrics to a melody that he has. And there'll be some pre-work that the teachers will do, so some of the, you know, brainstorming of ideas of what kinds of things they wanna write about and talking about, you know, kind of integrating poetry and all of those different kinds of things. And then the goal is that those songs could be part of our winter concert. So, we'll see, we'll see how that goes. I'm excited, I think it's gonna be great. Couple of other things that are going on, on the academic side, we should probably talk about that. So, we have got a lot to celebrate at the building. We know that the last few years have been less than ideal. There've been a lot of challenges, and our goal in our building has remained the same, that our expectation is 100% of our kids will be proficient in reading and math by the end of third grade. And like I said last year, I think when I was here, it felt, 100% is really the only option for us, because if we say 80%, that means we're okay with leaving 20% of the kids behind, and we're not. So, some of our data, and I know Kate's gonna share some of that as well, but last spring, our Ames Web Plus data, so that was our, like our benchmark data, 68, or I'm sorry, 69% of our third graders were proficient in math, 68% of our fourth graders and 51% of our fifth graders. So, it's not 100%, but we, that's really close. I was excited. Our forward data, pretty close to aligning with that. So, in math, 63% of our third graders were proficient, 43% of our fourth and fifth grade were proficient in math. Something interesting to point out is in our forward data, so we looked at our data from 1819, which was our last, which was our last pre-pandemic data that we had, third, fourth, and fifth grade in ELA and math. All the scores were up from last year, some of them doubled the levels of proficiency. And we had fourth grade ELA, third grade math, and fifth grade ELA that were all higher than pre-pandemic numbers. So, our staff have worked so hard with our kids and have pushed through and have put together interventions and good tier-one instruction, and it's paying off. So, I'm, I'm really proud of them. Again, our focus this year is going to be on 100% of our kids reaching proficiency by the end of third grade, and I hope to be standing here next year telling them that we have met that goal, because I think we can do it. So, thank you very much for your time. Are there any questions?
Good job.
Great job.
Thank you.
All right, Principal Levers from the middle school is up next. Welcome.
Yeah, spring was last time I was here, talking about a little bit, after school. Good to see everybody. You know, we're gonna talk a little bit about behavior, because we're at the middle school, right? No, we're, really came in to try to, to reset, okay? And I, I think we've done an excellent start with resetting for this school year. We started off, day one, day two, working with the entire grade level at a time, taking them through the PBIS, work respect belong expectations. I had the entire sixth grade in the stands, and I, I got a chance to speak with them, entire seventh grade, entire eighth grade, all together, and just wanted to talk to them about what we're, what we're trying to do for those kids. And it was powerful. It was, it was a, it was a great conversation, it lasted 10 or 15 minutes, but we talked about, we're here to get you ready for graduation from high school, and we're here to address one of the biggest problems that I think, you know, schools around the country were facing last year, is that a lot of kids didn't feel safe at school. And I noticed that data when I looked at our survey data from students, and I said it to the students, that that's what we're here for. We want 100% of our, our kids to feel safe at Superior Middle School. And so, I said, we have work to do, and we have to change that outcome for all of you. So, like I said, new procedures, new routines, but also just revisiting some expectations that we've had over the years, that maybe the last couple of years we weren't able to implement because of COVID restrictions or whatnot, right? Getting all the kids together and going over those work respect belong expectations, sharing that why, this is why we're doing it, I think was really powerful for all the kids to hear. Couple, couple just highlights, right? New expectations around cell phones and backpacks, things like that. That's been going really well up to this point. Teachers are super excited about it. I have had many conversations with kids about why, and when they hear the why, they start to understand, they start to participate in what we're trying to, what we're trying to accomplish. Couple of quick stats, we've had 21 referrals for cell phones so far. Eighth grade has 12, seventh grade has nine. I think we're in really good shape with the cellphone expectations. Most of the incidents are minor, meaning they just needed a, a quick reminder and put those cell phones back in their lockers. And the backpack, or cell phones in the lockers, backpacks have been a non-issue. This is, I think, a new thing that came in because of some COVID restrictions. Kids had to get used to using their lockers again, which is, which is a good thing. That's the way it's always been, and we have some, we've had no, no issues with some of those things. But the impact is big. Kids are in classrooms, participating, and the lunchroom is wonderful, where kids are seated at their, at their lunch tables, and they're talking. It's, it's really, it's really, it's been really great. Overall, right, overall, referrals are down a third over the first, first month of school from last year. So, it's feeling good. Teachers are reporting good things as well, and we're feeling really good about that. All this is made possible because we've got a great team of people working really hard together. We've got new administration, we've placed a lot of, we've placed a lot of supports back into the wings with teachers and students. Assistant principals are in the wings along with counselors, and they're meeting regularly with teachers about students needing support. We've got tier-two and tier-three meetings happening, so those, those systems are in place, and, and those folks are getting really organized about what those kids might need, and those are just beginning to start, and we're gonna see the benefits of that, and I expect the, the office referrals to indicate that. Speaking of support, we have a ton of support in place for our kids. We've got Check and Connect mentors, they're working with a lot of our tier-two students. We have insight teacher and social worker working with our tier-three students. Sixth grade teachers and staff went through bar training, building assets, reducing risks, and that's going well. A group of teachers was taking all the kids through an I-Team activity once a week, and that's more relationship building, we're getting at what those students are, are needing. And then there's a really well-structured system in place for teams to meet with assistant, assistant principals, counselors, and Kristin Regus, our, our bar coordinator, to put those systems in place for students when they need the extra support. Jeez, what else we have? We just received a grant from Douglas County for AODA curriculum, and this is really nice. We have, we've got a few instances of students vaping in the schools, and we wanna put some parts in place. We can't punish this out of the system, and many of our students are maybe addicted to nicotine, and it's tough to make it through the day or whatever, and we're, we're wanting to support those students. So, you were mentioning restorative practices earlier, that kinda really ties in nicely with that. We have consequences, we're following the code of conduct, but we also have supports that we're gonna be implementing for those kids that need it. So, we got a, a nice grant from the, from AODA, AODA supports from the county and as well as the American Lung Association, so those things will be rolling pretty soon, too. And then lastly, you know, one of the things that I feel strongly about is our students need some mental health supports. We've got contracts with our partners in the community, and those, those will be starting here soon as well. But our, our kids, you know, they need a little, little more, little more this year over these last couple of years, and I feel like we've put some really good systems in place to, to help support those kids. But again, all of this is working to this point really well. The field test is, is really good when you walk into the building, but I couldn't do it without a great supportive team. We've got great staff, teachers, and administration to really help kick this thing off, and we're off to a great start.
I, I will say probably if I was having a, yeah, I can start with middle school quite a bit, but I will say probably that I've had a lot of staff and students come to me and tell me about the environment, the atmosphere on the middle school and the high school. I don't know if we're talking high school tonight, too, but both those schools, the environment is, is way different than it was last year, and it's moving in a positive direction, so I think that's great, and I tell you, that's because of the leadership and everything else going on, so.
Well, I appreciate that. I would ask that you share that back with the teams and the teachers, they, they need to hear those, those good messages, too. I, I'm, you know, one of the things that I talked about when we first met with all the teachers is that we wanna change the, change the, the language, change the perception of what's out there about middle school and put some good positive things out, so I appreciate you saying that.
I wanna piggyback on that as well, and the teachers and staff that I've spoken to, parents and students, have really had positive things to say, and it's really hopeful for everyone. And like I say, it's a thanks to you and, and the team that you're talking about for all the hard work that you guys are putting in. So, you know, I'm sure there's still work to do, like you mentioned, but, you know, just focusing on the positives and keep plugging away. I'm really excited for you guys in the middle school.
Thanks. So, you can wrap up and come back? I say that, you love our new leadership, too. Good to see everyone.
Okay, up next, we have our new student representative from the high school, so he will share some help at the school. Aaron Johnson is here from Student Council, and you have a report. And so, welcome, first of all. Glad you're here. All right, you're up.
All right, so this past week was our homecoming week, and we had daily dress-up, just some pretty basic stuff, but we still had a lot of participation for dress-up every day. We also had games at lunch that kids could win prizes for, and we saw a lot of participation with that, so we're seeing a lot of participation across the board. We had a successful powder puff on Wednesday, and the seniors won that. All of our sports teams had a win or got a medal at some point this week. All of our sports were announced and celebrated at the assembly, so it wasn't just focused on only football, although they did have a main point in it. Game night, and then our assembly, we successfully had a neon slash glow-in-the-dark assembly, so there was some points in it that we had turned off the majority of the lights and had handed out glow sticks and like glow-up foam sticks as well. We had a ton of floats in our big parade, and football won the, and at the football game, we had a big student section, and the students felt that the middle schoolers having a chaperone worked well, and there wasn't a ton of chaos with that. Outside of this past week and overall, kids feel like the foam policy is working well. We're, as a student council, we're trying to reach out and listen more to all of our students and trying to take a poll from them rather than just what we see as a student council. The freshmen that have just joined us this past week believe that as their freshman class, there's already better attendance compared to how they felt eighth grade. And the lunches are going well, there's still, there's enough food at C-Lunch, it's all balanced out very well. There was the problem last year of running out food halfway through C-Lunch or halfway through B-Lunch.
Running out of some choices.
Right, yes. Some of the choices, and they are liking the new, different menu items as well. And then coming up, we have Fall Ball on the 15th, which is two Saturdays from now as well.
All right. Any guys have any questions?
Well, welcome, there, young man. We know each other, and I'm really happy you're here. Who is, is Ms. Formakis, and who else, your advisors for Student Council?
It's Mrs. Francisco and then.
Francisco.
It's Aatrox. Is that a little too first?
Before you know it, it'll be May and your year will be over, so enjoy every minute, it happens very fast.
Thanks.
Love having you here.
How is the soccer season going?
We're doing pretty well. We have another game tomorrow down in Hayward, so.
Had to miss some practice to get here.
I leave early from practice to get over here to be able to join all you guys.
The big turnover of seniors, so.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Thanks.
All right, thanks for your report. All right, you got mine up there now? Okay, so the last item on my agenda is this week, October 2nd through the 8th, Wisconsin recognizes school boards across the state of Wisconsin. So, as I was thinking about, how do we recognize the work that you guys do every year, I went back and I reflected on the last 12 months of our school board agendas and tried to highlight some of the accomplishments. So, I put together just a, a short slideshow, just to kind of recognize all the work that you guys have done as a school board and the important role that you guys play in our, in our school district. Did David have a hand in this?
No, I did this all myself. Oh, he had a hand in this.
Dang it. So, I wanted to, like I said, I went back for the last 12 months since the last school board week, which was, which is every October, or, yeah, which is in every October, and I just kinda wanna highlight some of the accomplishments that our district has been able to celebrate, and, and you guys have had a direct role in these celebrations. First of all, this board has always been strong advocates for public education. Our board is always well-represented at our annual school board convention that happens every January. We always have good representation and a strong presence, and we're always recognized at a state level for having a strong voice and advocacy for public education. Annually, this board has, has provided suggestions for resolutions to be adopted by the WASB delegate assemblies to set policy direction for the state. Most recently, Resolution 2108 was adopted a year ago, and, and then was adopted again at the WASB delegation as well. So, Policy 2108, commercial sexual exploitation and trafficking was something this board had a direct impact on at the state level. And then lastly, around advocacy, this board, for as long as I've been here, has been a strong advocate for mental health services at the state and the local level, and continues to be a strong advocate for our mental health needs and services. This board has had an opportunity to provide experiences for our students across a variety of different content areas. We've had our orchestra go to Minneapolis, our robotics to Milwaukee, our biology courses to Chicago, middle school students to Washington DC, and our civics classes to Madison, and you guys have approved all of those over the last 12 months to allow students to have those different experiences. This board has helped to make sure we have high-quality student programs and services in place. You've helped us to adopt and fund Check and Connect, our mentor and our program and our training that we're doing specifically at the middle school. A year ago, we've adopted nine new courses at the high school level to provide just a more robust opportunities and electives for students at the high school level. We've had the opportunity to ensure that those co-op agreements continue to happen for girls hockey, boys swim and dive, as well as gymnastics. This board has been an active support when it comes to student suicide prevention intervention and postvention, and making sure our policies and procedures are doing all we can to prevent any sort of student suicide thoughts, and that prevention piece is huge. And then this board has also helped to ensure that our student code of conduct is updated and help, and has helped to, I think directly has had an impact on some of the, the updates you heard tonight from our principals. Additionally, this board has helped to provide additional positions in our school district. We've been able to provide our staff, elementary EMLSS teaching positions that have been able to provide reading and math interventions at the elementary level this year. We have hired four additional credit recovery teachers, which have had a direct impact on credit acquisition for students who are behind in credits. We've hired a mental health coordinator. We've adjusted the social worker job description, and we've been able to hire social workers at the elementary, middle, and high school level. You've helped and supported the transportation department when it's come to restructuring and making sure they have adequate staffing throughout the school year, as well as our food service restructure. Recently, helped us to ensure that we have a communications and public relations specialist position. Additionally, this board has, this is just the last 12 months, I think it's kind of a big deal. In the last year, you guys have helped with the COVID relief funds that Governor Evers pushed out last winter. You have been able, you helped to push those out in the form of staff bonuses last December in the, with the intent of supporting staff retention. You provided 4% salary increases across all employee groups last school year that was in effect for this fall. Increased stipends for activity and academic staff, salary schedules and vacation language updated for variety of support staff positions. All of these things help us to attract and retain high-quality staff in our school district, and we've been able to restructure our paraprofessional language, job description, as well as salary increases for that employee group. You guys at the, at the board level have helped us recognize so many different staff. We've recognized people as part of the Spartan Showcase, students, teachers, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, custodians, food service, and administrators, and most recently, we've recognized at the board level a guest teacher of the year. And with all of those things, this goes back to your original question, with all of those things, we've had some pretty, I think, important accomplishments to highlight. Last school year, we had 311 students in the graduate. Last school year, we had 311 students, um, in the graduating class of twenty, twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two. 191 of those graduated either in the spring or the summer. Um, calculating that out is almost 94% graduation rate. I put an asterisk there because, um, this isn't official until DPI recognizes and calculates their own formula and certifies it, um, so that number might adjust a little bit, but those are the, those are the, that's the raw data from last spring. That's a pretty incredible, um, accomplishment in itself.
Significant.
Significant, significant. And while we did all of that work, we've also increased our fund reserve of both Fund 10 and Fund 46. This is just the last three years, but if we look back at the last five years that I've been here, um, it's even more substantial. So I just pulled the last three years worth of data. Fund 46 is our capital account used that, um, is an invest, where, where we have money that we put aside for capital, um, um, renovations, like new roofs and things like that, that will need to be planning for in the years to come. So. With that, I just wanted to say thank you to our board during the recognition week for your support. Um, that's helped significantly, um, as we've progressed as a school district. We still have challenges to come, obviously. Um, I think some of the greatest challenges that we have will be ensuring that we have adequate funding at the state level, knowing that we haven't had an increase in a long time. And that is an important piece that we'll need to problem solve in the years to come here.
How long's that been again? 2008?
Since we had increase?
If you were below the $10,000 threshold, they increased it $300 a year for three years. I think the last increase was 18. You'll see the effect on it when we get to the budget.
So thank you.
A question?
Yes.
Can we question? On the, uh, graduation rate, um, again, significant change. So that's the four-year cohort and yes, the DPI will come in and they'll come in sometimes with different numbers. Of those that did not graduate, do we know how many did return this year? Because I know that over a certain time, you have the five-year cohort, the six-year cohort where then that'll affect that rate as well.
So just because they weren't a part of that four-year cohort, doesn't mean that they won't graduate.
But do we know how many of those students that did not graduate out of the class?
Still progressing?
Are, yes.
Yeah, I don't know that up top. Do you know that?
I don't know. Once it's, once it's certified in December, we can then pull all the statistics about who did officially graduate and who is continuing and enrolled and who is considered a state code of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To go off Steve's question, that's 6%. Is there any data behind it? Maybe why they didn't graduate aside from personal reasons, school wise or anything? Is there data that tells us what we should be looking at?
I think, uh.
Go ahead, I'm looking at you for, I'll answer it.
What you find out. Dug into kid by kid very specifically because, um, I think at that, I think we always are, but at that point really looking at, it's very student specific. Uh, we were unable to generalize, which, we're bad. We were unable to generalize, like if we had just done this thing, you know, five more kids. It was very specific. Um, I think a few things that we know, but that, that confirmed, uh, you know, attendance early on and developing a pattern of attending school, even elementary school onward. Uh, a number of, uh, these students have not been our students from elementary through their transfers in. So we, we didn't have them a, a super long time. So I think depending on how you look at it, the reason changes, but it is, I think what it does tell us is it's so critical to look at every kid as a kid, not as, you know, a system and a process. We have to always, and our counselors and our teachers and our administrators do an amazing job of in the moment, problem solving with each kid and family. And I think we've seen the results from that 94% graduation rate were a result of many individual student family directions to get kids. Which it has been historically as well.
But there's a number of kids that just never return. I mean, that, that's a fact. There's a number of kids that, uh, that believe, in fact, it's, it's still a little bit of a misnomer in our community that, um, once you turn 16, you don't have to go to school anymore. Wisconsin, much different than Minnesota. So we've, and over the years that I worked on that, that was one of, one of the biggest problems that we have. Well, we're, we're just going over to Duluth that kids will leave their parents' name and they don't give any notification to the school that they are leaving. They don't enroll in another school in either the state of Wisconsin or wherever. So we do have some problems of tracking those type of students.
So to Steve's point in Minnesota, you can drop out officially when you're 16. Rule in the state of Wisconsin, so that is. If they're transing across state line. But I would say we have not.
No, it's 16, I think.
We have not seen any state data yet, but I would say based on the conversations that I've heard, I think that we are going to, we are, we are above the norm of graduation rates. Like the growth we've made in the last year of really focused concentration on that data. We're gonna be outshining the state.
Is, is part of that due to any of that credit recovery courses?
I think everything we talked about is contributing to that. I think credit recovery certainly in just the last month, we've even.
We didn't implement the boarding teachers until this fall. Raw new data that we looked at the high school last week. Last year in the month of September, we had four courses recovered. And this year in the month of September, because of the hard work of those four teachers, we have 51 credits recovered. Significant growth, those new teachers we hired for those positions and one, um, veteran teacher we already had are doing evening jobs. So we're very excited about the additional contribution that that will add to the already increased graduation rates.
It, it's the programming and it's the people that are in the programs that are monitoring. Shouldn't really say monitoring, but, but are, it is, it's a monitoring process and stuff. But then being able to reach out to those kids and actually have a good, build a good relationship with them. That, that's when those programs are really successful.
We're getting some really helpful data from those students that are in those courses right now about what were the struggles and barriers you had the first time? You know, that made it difficult for you to pass this course or these courses and what made it more successful for you this time? And we're really going to be able to use that feedback from the kids to make the future experiences better. We're very excited about the work that those teachers are doing.
Crystal, one other thing, it's so in that, in that process, I need my US history credit. So in that whole process and stuff of, of standard based grading, I may have missed this one particular thing. I don't have to retake the entire course, correct? I'm, I'm focusing on this particular.
Students are, are retaking or relearning and getting support on the components of that course that they failed. Because most students did not struggle with the whole course. They maybe struggled with different components or standards or units. So that is a, a big change that we made in our summer school credit recovery a couple of years ago.
That's all I have.
I just want to say thank you for putting that together, but, um, not to be weird. I just feel like we just give the okay and a lot of that and obviously we're supportive. But, um, thank you Amy and, and Molly for putting together a really awesome team to do this work. So thank you all. Yep.
Thank you.
And as they say in, on, um, Congress or the Senate, I yield the floor.
Thanks for filling in.
Glad you're okay, Lynn.
That will move into committee agenda, starting off with the operations committee and Steve Stebeck.
Okay, I have no action items tonight. I have no discussion items tonight. But I do have a couple informational items. First of all, we'll hear from Mr. Jamie Wilson in the food service department.
Hey, everybody.
Did you set them up to plug you before you go?
Maybe, or maybe we've been working on it, right? So. Are you doing that? There we go. Service department, right? We, hopefully you all know this, um, we've been working really hard this last year and I have to echo what our principals say and what everybody else has been saying is it feels different this year. It feels good in all eight schools that we walk into. It feels like kids are ready to be there. Our team's ready to be there. Um, it, it really does feel good all the way around. Every picture I have on here tonight is from this fall and what we've been doing in our schools right now. If you haven't been to our high school, that's what we offer there and Northern Lakes we got here. Um, we serve 4,500 to 5,000 meals and snacks every single day. That stays pretty constant in our district. One million meals and snacks each school year. I think we did like 989,000. I'm calling it a million, okay? Forty-one positions, 10 full-time benefited positions we have in our district. When I came here, I had a four-hour person who worked the summer. My position was not even year round. We've really advocated that. We have full, um, eight year round, 10 full-time benefited positions in our department. Eight of them are full-time year round, thanks to some changes we made. I have staff that work all summer for our summer program. They were not being, getting the credit for being full-time year-round positions. That has completely changed what our department is able to plan for, what we're able to do. And I know that the staff I have in all of those positions aren't out looking for work in the summer to make ends meet. They're here with us year round and I'm just so happy that we're able to provide that year-round, um, position for our managers. Um, 29 part-time, majority just under 30 hours each week. We hear that. Why darn, can't we make those full-time? I have a ton of staff who want part-time work. Those are the ones we're looking for, the ones who, we provide something in food service that, if you have any food service experience that nobody else does, you go to work when your students are at work, your kids are at work. That's what we can provide. Once we get our hooks in you, it's pretty easy for us to hold on to you. But we have a very competitive food service wages. Our average wage in our kitchen is about $17 an hour, which is what people are out there are paying. We do have some entry level that pay a little less than that, but our managers and some of our head cooks are making much more than that. Uh, we have two subs currently. That's all we have. We've had as many as six since I've been here, but it's working. Currently we have four vacant positions, which isn't any more or less than we usually have. We are, we are really struggling with getting candidates more than once we get them. It seems like we're getting some quality, but we're just struggling with people knowing that yes, we're hiring and we're always hiring. So getting that word out is super important. Um, we still run a school breakfast program. It's free for all students, all eight schools. Participation for 2022 is currently about 33% of students eat breakfast with us. 45% of our students at elementary and 22% at that middle school and high school. I don't know, breakfast, we all know is a very important part of our day. 45% at our elementary school, I think is great. Um, we're always trying to increase that, um, 100%. Um, fruits, juices, low-fat milk, cheese, yogurt, whole grain, that's everything we serve in our kitchens. Um, lunch participation is really, really great in our district. Over 60% of our students eat school lunches every single day. Um, it's, it's super at our middle school and high school. Many fresh fruits and vegetables every day. That's our serving lines at our elementaries, at our middle school and at our high school. And I'm not going to tell you I'm proud of it, but I'm going to tell you, I love what we are able to offer our kids. I, I think our kids are super lucky. They don't know how lucky they are and I'm okay with that. Um, we, we hang our hat on that. This is every day in every kitchen is what we do here.
Have you guys noticed the numbers stay pretty much the same, even though the free lunches for all has ended?
Yes. And I was a little worried about that. We're talking about that too. You're good at this. This is all our new items at our high school right now that we threw out and changed some menus around. Just knew that our kids were getting kind of tired of some of the things we serve. You were supposed to have pizza here. I wanted to bring you the new pizza oven that we have. We're making it just this really quality product. You can't make a good pizza in the ovens we've had. I've tried everything. So we moved some things around, made an investment in this and I'm super happy with it. But supply chain issues being what they are, I was waiting for a crest last week that didn't come and waiting for him today. So it was either choose between you or our students. You know where that goes. What happens is we've really made an effort in our middle school and high school. We've heard that students, the perception is that we run out of food. We hear that. We want to change it. And I think we've done a really good job and I'll tell you how I know we have is at the beginning of middle school, it happens every year, our numbers are down. And they, they see, or they're at a certain point and they go down further. Um, because we sometimes don't guess right or don't predict right, well, we made some changes and we may are making a conscious effort to produce more food than we need at the beginning of the year. Cause we want kids to know that they come through their lines and they get their favors, not just they get food. And we've gone up about eight, 10% since the beginning of the school year at our middle school. And usually we feed kids and it goes down and we get in this healthy, um, spot. But at the middle school, it's gone up and the high school is doing really well as always. But we're serving this pizza. I'm going to tell you, I'll bring it one time, but it is fabulous. Um, I put it up against some people in this town. Shredded beef cilantro lime rice bowl where you changed to, and we're making a homemade meatloaf, um, vegetable lo mein. Uh, this macaroni and cheese with Fritos and barbecue sauce is kind of to die for. And then we do a black bean salad that they like, kale salads. We just tried to give them as much variety as we can and it's working. It's working really well.
Can we change our time there? We're going to that.
They're coming tomorrow.
I love to show off our program. I love to show what we do. Walking by and seeing what we do is one thing, but I invited David to come have lunch with us and we spent what? About an hour talking about school lunch? I can do it. Okay. There's no laws for words here. I really love what we do. This is our middle, our, our middle school and our elementaries. Um, what we serve there, this is the real food we serve them. We have a great relationship with Bayfield Co-op. I don't know if I told this group or not before, in 2019, we served 6,000 pounds of Bayfield apples. Get from the tree, put in a truck, they get here the week of, right after they come off. We are having a really hard time getting them. Oh, you cider drinkers out there are competing with school kids getting apples. And it seems that the small growers like to support the small business like that. So we're really struggling to get it. So you cider drinkers are choosing cider over kids. So we're still serving some things for them though. We get, we get tomatoes from them, we get lettuce from them. Um, I just had a conversation with Bay Produce tomatoes in town here. How do we get more of their product incorporated, at least at the high school where they seem to appreciate a good tomato? So those are the things we look at. Tomatoes, peppers, variety lettuce, winter squash, Upper Lakes food. They do a seasonal produce in this five-state area. It's not as local as maybe we'd like, but winters are long here and they help us out. And if they, they are highlighting some purple cauliflower, some fresh asparagus before we get it, I jump on that right away and just say, send it to us. You know, how much do you got? Give us as much as you can and then we disperse it to schools. I can get kids to eat Brussels sprouts, squash, asparagus. We just put it out, make it presentable, offer it to them. They don't know if they like it. They get the opportunity to not like it, but they also get the opportunity to like it. Um, 600 pounds of Bayfield blueberries I just brought in last week. Um, they individually freeze them, put them in boxes. They smell amazing. They look just as good as fresh. Kids love them. We go through, my staff loves to serve them. After-school meals, we still serve our after-school meals program. Our numbers aren't great this year, but not a complete surprise when the weather is still decent, they get out of school. But, um, begins with last bell, though, 3:45, that's, um, 400 meals a day about between the middle school and high school. We try to make this super easy for them to grab it and get out the door. We serve Domino's at that, uh, meal at both the middle school and the high school, not every day, but a couple of days a week. Cause it seems like the kids really want it and that's what drives traffic and gets them in the door. Um, some of the other programs we have, we do the summer food service program. All eight schools, 15 sites, we just try to get in pockets of the community that we can get in that kids need meals. Sometimes we're good at it. We figure it out and some places grow. Sometimes we go there and nobody comes and we move on. You know, we'll try it for a month or two and we give it a shot. But, um, anything we can do to reach more kids in the summer is what we do. After-school snacks, school milk program, we offer those during, at all our elementary schools. We support concessions. We are at every football game, all home games, varsity football, JV and varsity volleyball, basketball, both boys and girls. That is really, it's not a huge moneymaker for our program, but my staff love to do it. They see these kids in a completely different light than they do all day. They're having fun and we pay, we, we've raised the concession wage higher to get just more people who, it's a way for our staff to get extra hours if they want them periodically. But it, it just works really well for us. Staff love it. We don't worry about it because they're people who work in our kitchen. We try to take things, um, you know, booster clubs make money because they have volunteers. We don't make a lot of money and we set our prices to pay for our staff and to make sure we can support our students in those programs. We do some catered events, salute to service as ours. We like to show off that. We do some catered events, salute to services ours. We like to show off there. In-service breakfast and lunches we get asked to do, bunch of small events in the school year. All cart and vending, the vending machines at the high school are ours. All that stuff extra that gets some of our middle school and high school kids in trouble. And some parents get mad at us, but others love that they have opportunities to buy more things. All that's under our programs. Those are all individually packaged, you know, serving size requirements, low fat, low sodium. They say the kids don't like them. You know, they're used to them. They buy them like crazy. All those funds in those programs, that's, the extra funds from that is what helps us support that free breakfast for all students. So I get really touchy when somebody says they wanna come in and sell X, Y, or Z while we're serving lunch or selling these products. Cause we need those extra funds in order to continue to serve our kids free breakfasts. We have to have outside funds to support that breakfast program. And this is the outside funds that supports that breakfast program. It, it works super well. What are our strengths? I'm gonna tell ya, customer service, student-focused. Not just me, our teams, they tell me, Jamie, the kids really want this. I mean, we get feedback every day. They hear it. Then we get feedback every day. Our staff is super committed. There are a large number of our staff, five-plus years, many with ten-plus years. They have a real desire to serve, serve students and love the student interaction. I have had staff that have gotten a little older and not been able to like work at cashier station, maybe at that high school because it's chaotic, it's loud. And you can see just the morale, like, okay, we gotta figure out how this works. Cause that's what they're here for. They don't wanna be in the back prepping vegetables. They want, COVID sucked for us. We did as much as we could, but our staff, like, I just wanna see kids. And they're, they just, that's all, that's what they're here for. We have strong participation. What does that mean? Our budget, Fund Fifty, that's separate from regular school district budget, is solid, super stable. We're able to do some things for our department, keep current on training and equipment and staff gets paid well. And we provide uniforms, we provide some things that just keeps them secure. I think, I'm really happy with our social media presence. We no longer, we do not comment on our own posts. And if somebody talks bad about us, the community really supports us. Let's just say that, is we don't just sit back and let it happen. I think we've really gained some trust in this community after COVID. Is we're here for our students and families, period. And I think when we sat down and did everything we could to give food to families that needed it through COVID, they trust that we're gonna do everything we can to do right by them. And I really think that's helped us a lot. It leapfrogged us, maybe what, what it taken years to do. I'm just, I, I know that our families appreciate it and we're gonna continue to do more and we will not let them down. Moving forward, we have a great partnership with Upper Lakes. It says, I know they're in K-12, but their owners, there, a lot of their staff work in this community and they are super strong supporters of K-12 school food service, which right now is hard to find. Cisco, US Foods, some of these dropped school contracts in August. Like, they put bids out, they said, we'll bring you food, and they just, this was last year, and they said, we're not bringing food. There's no money in it, there's no market. We, it's too unsettling and they left. Upper Lakes said, whatever we gotta do, Jamie, whatever we gotta do to feed kids and to help you do that. They're super committed. And I know that. So going forward, we just try and work with them and they make their money off us. Don't get me wrong. They have to file bids too, but they are just super strong supporters of us. Supply chain issues are real. That's probably our biggest battle today. Is placing orders, coming on Monday morning, expecting them to be there and they're not. And that's just the way it is. That's what we deal with a lot. If we scramble, we try to do the best we can. And I think we are. I think my team's doing it and it's working. We are looking for some local sources. We talked about that earlier. If we can find something, you know, that can fill a hole, or somebody else that wants to help, we're open to any conversation. We're trying to increase benefited positions when opportunity and department dictates. We have some specific team building, just our team and leadership training that is food service specific that we scheduled for this year. My staff is telling me, what do you need? What do you want? We want some of that training too. And I'm so glad to hear them tell me that. We want, I, I think they feel appreciated. They feel like they're professionals. They feel like they're part of this team that we have. I think what we have in this community and in this district, more so in this district, is we have admin support. Whether it's at this building or at every building. Principals are super approachable. They know if I'm in the door and I wanna be seen and I want them to be able to talk to my staff. If they have an issue or something's going well that we need to talk about, I just feel like we have solid admin support. And that really makes my job easy. Why do we, you know, I'm gonna toot my horn. I love feeding my kids, right? I come to school and my kids didn't eat school lunch, and that was, that's nobody's problem, nobody's fault. But my kids would sit at their table and they hear the complaints about school lunch, no matter what, right? Dad, the fries are soggy. What are you gonna do about those burgers? We run out of food. I've had kids in preschools for the last a lot of years, and I'm one left, right? And I did not wanna let them down. I want their friends to talk it. I want, when I pick, talk about it. I want, when I pick them up and bring them to a football game, I wanna hear. And I want you to tell me, what, what's not good? I, I, I'm so open to it. These kids, they go through this program. My staff gets to work with them day in and day out, no matter what grade they're in. They see them for years on end. They see family. I just, I love what I do. I appreciate that we're able to do what we do. I appreciate that my team supports me. And there it is, okay?
Jamie, can you say, I like your passion. You clearly have it. I like your excitement. Like how you talk about your staff and your department. We do have a meeting next Monday. Pizza's good done too. But the only thing I'd like to, I know we talked last time we visited and I like to really see what we could do for kids with dietary restrictions though in school.
We can talk about that. We do a lot. It's just not. We can talk.
I think, I think future discussion, I think we could work on something.
Thank you again, Jamie.
The other thing I just wanted to add, I don't know if you know, Jamie not only provides good leadership in our school district, amazing leadership in our school district. He also is an advocate at the state at the national level when it comes to working with other food service departments. And you've been a strong presence and have helped with legislative platforms, so you're recognized across the straits.
I saw a photo not too long ago, like a statewide.
All right, second of all, I have a school safety partnership update with the Superior Police Department. Paul Winter Shield.
I don't know how I followed that. Now I'm.
Welcome.
So the Superior Police Department has been working closely with the school district to address concerns within the school district about student safety. And not only with training our SROs, preparing our SROs to better serve the students, but the police department in general has really taken steps to, you know, provide better service to the students when they're just out in the community. So that's been really important. Specifically within the school, we've, we've really worked hard to address the active shooter threat. We provided additional specific training for active shooter response to our officers recently at the middle school. We had nearly all of our patrol officers and many of our detectives and even our administrators go through active shooter training. That active shooter training is conducted in cooperation with the fire department to highlight some of our collaborative response tactics that we use with our fire department. So that was really good.
Was that done over the summer?
That was, yeah.
Over the summer months?
It was actually just before school started.
Before school started, okay.
So that was timely, keeps it fresh in the officers' minds. In addition to that, we are continuing that training in our, in our quarterly department firearms training. Next week, we're gonna be doing some advanced training that'll help prepare the officers to respond to active shooter events if they should ever arise. So that's been really important. We work closely with the school to address issues within the school and the role of our SROs to make students feel more comfortable and to better address their needs. Some of those include training for our school resource officers. We set out in our MOU, we identified several training areas that we wanted to focus on in our MOU with the school. And I think we've either accomplished those or we have a near-term plan to accomplish those.
We worked hard to make sure SROs are a part of any training at our building level, at the middle and the high school. And yeah, part of any sort of meetings or collaboration that we do together. So that's been good.
Yeah, anything we can do to improve communication between the staff, the teachers, and our SROs. Keep our SROs in the loop about what's going on. And make sure the students have a voice in that as well. It's important to us in the police department. Department-wide, we've done things like implemented implicit bias training for all of our officers. We've implemented active bystandership for all of our officers. Recently, late this summer, we did a refresher implicit bias training where all of our officers were prepared to complete, just kind of refresher sustainment training on that current topic. Going forward into next year, my hope as a training coordinator for the department is to bring trauma-informed policing to the department, and I'm hoping for that in the spring. Call-wise, this year so far, we've had ninety-four calls, incidents reported. Now, the majority of those are alarms, these like traffic complaints. I just did a quick search of the numbers. I didn't see, I didn't see significant numbers of disturbances. I think there were two disturbances. There is one battery reported. No fights reported. We have about seventy different classifications of incidents. So some of those have rather loose definitions, but it gives you kind of a snapshot about what's going on at the schools. I've, I've been pleasantly surprised with the, you know, low number of violence kind of related calls, even if it's low-level disturbance, violence, or school fights. I've, I've been happy to see that those numbers have been relatively low.
Paul, that's so far this year?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, of the ninety-four, you have eleven alarms. Some of the top numbers here, you have ten classified as juvenile problems. And that could be anything from like, you know, kid causing a scene or something like that where the school resource officer is notified. One of the things that we have set out to do, and I think we've, we've been successful in accomplishing is defining the role of the school resource officer with the school to not be the administrative rule enforcer, right? They're there to protect the students from themselves, from each other, from the outside. So that's, uh, that's their role and I think they're doing a good job about.
Yeah, we've incorporated that as part of our back-to-school updates with staff. You know, clarifying the role of principal, assistant principal, deans, counselors, social workers, SRO. They all have kind of a different role that they play in, in schools.
Do you have any specific questions for me that I can answer?
The only other thing I wanted to add was we work really closely together, whether it's Nick or you or SROs. We've met over the summer to talk through our new visitor policy that we implemented this year to make sure we're keeping those front entrances as secure as possible and monitoring who's coming in and out. You guys are a good partner when it comes to our emergency response plans that we develop. Our SROs are, have a significant role, especially at the secondary level when it comes to those plans. We're in the process, we've scheduled, the Department of Justice is going to be, and I haven't told you this yet, is going to be, they've scheduled a threat assessment training for, that'll happen in Superior at the end of November. So your SROs or any of your staff are invited to that. And so we have a handful of administrators or counselors who may have not gone through that initial training a few years ago when we had, when it was first implemented. So we'll have that and your, your staff and our staff will work together to, to go through that training. And then the other thing that, my understanding is there's a statute that changed last spring around working with local police departments and school districts with software tools to upload our school maps so that you have readily available access in a specific software program that we're gonna work to purchase and, and provide. And there's a grant available to schools in Wisconsin to be able to do that. So we're working closely. That's a work in progress, but that is another significant project that we're working on.
I, I did wanna point out that I think we've been very effective in quickly responding to frontline items. You know, the student is concerned about another student engaging in violence, they can provide a tip. That tip is passed on to the police department rather quickly. And we've done a good job in that handful that we've had to investigate those and ensure that the students are safe.
Yeah, when that comes in most handy is like if a student makes a, had, send the tip after school hours, it's serious. That goes right to the police department and that, that work begins that evening. So it doesn't wait until the people come back to school on the next day.
Another thing that we did implement this year is the handle of care protocol. When you come through or not yet, but I think that, that went rather smoothly.
I will say, I observed at the homecoming football game, some of the officers, it was fun to see them interacting with the community and the students. And I think the relationship piece is so important. So it was really.
There was a lot of them there to see there.
Yeah.
So one thing, I'm always an advocate for liaisons in the officers or in the schools. Go back to, we don't have a liaison in elementary schools. So that means patrol has to respond to any calls there. So of the ninety-four, do you know how many are at elementary schools?
I can let you know. I see eight incidents at Bryant, three at Cooper, one at Four Corners, eight at Great Lakes, four at Lake Superior, nine at Northern Lights, one at Cathedral, and then five that says district, it must be the district office called the police.
I don't do that, so.
Could be the alarm.
That's probably.
So roughly.
There were, yeah, there were. At the high school.
Do the liaisons at the middle or high school have to leave to go to elementary, or is it just strictly patrol going to elementary?
You know, I think it depends on availability. Sometimes Mike will hop on the radio and volunteer to go over to the elementary calls. For the most part, I would expect it to be our patrol officers that would be responding.
And so I don't expect you to have this answer right now, but if, if maybe come up with one. Do you see any difference of having a liaison in the elementary school versus patrol having to respond to them?
Response time-wise, if the incident happened to occur at the elementary school that the liaison officer was at, I think obviously it would take longer for somebody to drive. And we have a number of elementary schools, so the elementary officer, liaison officer would have to be shared between those schools. So for instance, if the elementary liaison officer is at Bryant and the incident happened at Cooper, it would be a patrol response first anyways. So I don't, I don't necessarily see a significant difference unless a school resource officer does happen to be at the school where the incident's occurring. Then of course, it's much, much faster. Yeah, that answers your question.
So the only other thing I wanna bring up is I was approached and there was just some difficulty. And I'm not going anywhere different in this conversation, but we're talking about name changes. We, we did this with the emails, going to numbers. One of the, one of the problems that I've, I've heard of is when a student changes their name in the school, in the school, in the school file, that name gets changed. Go with the police department, that name stays what was on.
Legal name.
Right. So how can we get the officers in the school, yes, that same information as far as maybe in the school, can you keep track of the name last year versus this year, whatever the case is, so that they can do?
It also becomes an issue with like immunization records, is another example. Casey's not here tonight, but I think there's probably a solution to that.
Cause I, I noticed a situation came up where John, let's say John, I'm looking for John, but in the system, it's not John, right? So then when we deal with active shooters or any other situation in school, I think it'd be helpful for the officers to be able to find.
My understanding is a legal name is still in power school. It just shows up as a preferred name. So both should be in there.
So does it track every time something?
It should, because you'd have both of them in the system.
That's something that's come up to me. That's that problem. So make sure that.
The corrections are shared with the police department.
That's what I need to look at, yeah.
That would be really helpful because we can link that in our, our.
I don't know how we can share data. So we have to check the data.
Yeah.
Sharing.
That'd be helpful.
I'm looking at Kyle mostly, but we can talk about that later.
I just want them to be able to find. I just want them to be able to find the person they're looking for.
Yeah. Like I said, if there's a student has a legal name, we should be able to see that in Power School because that hasn't been changed in Power School necessarily. Right? I'm looking. Yeah, okay. No, I want him to speak. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. President, that's all I have. Next, we've got Teaching and Learning Committee.
No, no action items, no discussion items. Informational items. First, Kate Tesh, our Director of Continuous Improvement and Assessment.
Good morning, good afternoon, good evening.
Maybe morning a little while.
I have a few things to share with you today, just a few updates. As we have come back working on our continuous improvement plans, obviously graduation, we've already talked a little bit about data. So first, I want to start with some exciting, just to give you a preview of some of the work that we've been working on this fall and that principals and shared leadership teams have been creating. Yeah, if you want to pull that up, I just have a sample for you. We worked hard to create school profiles. So this is just an example of Cooper's. We have one for each building. We're just in the final edits of all of them and their details. These will be posted on the district main site and then also on each building's webpage. And so it gives a little bit of the demographics. It gives a little bit of the who we are, and this language came from the shared leadership teams. Each school has a little place to say, here's what we're really proud of at, for example, Cooper. Then on the backside, we've summarized the goals, the action steps, how we're monitoring those. And then at the very bottom, I think, is a little bit on how we're going to engage with families around those goals and actions. So this is our continuous improvement plans, our lengthy documents. We spend a lot of time in a really scientific process around analyzing lots of data. And it's really hard to publish a, you know, fifteen page document that's meaningful to people who haven't experienced the process. So the work here has really gone into just being able to showcase the building and then also summarize the important pieces of the continuous improvement plan, especially the goals and the action steps for all of our community members. Obviously, I wanted to share with you just a little preview. So Casey Smith has worked hard on the design. We've worked on these since the summer. So each one looks a little different depending on what information they wanted to share, but we tried to have kind of a streamlined approach. So those will be live. Our hope is by the end of the week on the website within our strategic plan placed and then also on each school's site. So we're calling them school profiles. So if you're referencing them, that's typically what I've been calling them to differentiate a little bit from the continuous improvement plan. So I'm proud of those. I think they look really nice and it.
Look really nice.
Snapshot. Thank you. And when you just scroll back to that first page.
Sure.
We often get a lot of questions about the demographic makeups of each building. So that's kind of why we included that first spot with a little bit of breakdown. What's our percentage of staff? Enrollment, et cetera, and then our ethnicity and race demographics, and then our attendance. Those are kind of our big three target areas. So I wanted you to kind of know why that was included on there. Any questions about those? I'm hopeful that there'll be a nice snapshot of buildings and also attract people who are looking at different schools and moving into the area. I think they're a nice piece. I've seen different versions of them in different districts. I think ours looked better than any other sample. And I did have to make one principal change the who we are. It said best school in Superior, and I said, well, I can't. To put more text in there as they're all amazing. So those are our school profiles. Wanted you to have a sneak peek at those. The next thing I just wanted to update you on is our fall benchmark assessment window closed last Friday. Just super quick overview. Good practice. We benchmark screen every student kindergarten through actually four K, but kindergarten through fifth grade. This year, we've implemented a new tool called Fast Bridge Assessment Product Math Literacy. It meets all of our requirements for reading readiness at four K through second grade. And then also we're getting our screening kind of, I think the best phrase I've heard of what our benchmark assessments, they're like a well child check, so we just want to screen everybody, make sure that we aren't not aware of where everybody's at. Kind of when they come back to school, it allows teachers to get some really quick data and then start building in any interventions and supports off of that. And we will do that three times a year. So fall, winter, spring, typically September, January, and then May. And again, Fast Bridge is our new assessment product we are using at our elementary, and we're also using that to progress monitor K-12. At the middle school, we utilize MAP and WEA assessment, again, grade six, eight, but we're using a couple of different tools, including Fast Bridge to progress monitor. So we have seen, leading into, the state has released data from twenty-one, twenty-two last week and connecting the two pieces together. We need our benchmark assessments because our state data is not timely. When we get our data back, it is not something that can help us drive instructions six months after kids took the assessment. So it's an important kind of dipstick, like where were we at this moment in time and how do we compare across the state of Wisconsin? But we need other assessment tools to help us kind of know more about kids and be able to not only diagnose some pieces, but also know what we need to do to intervene and support so that they can be on grade level, on track. And we have some normed data from the nation. So our state released our assessment data in December. I hope is, like I have done historically, to give you an update on all of our school report cards, those have not been publicly released yet. They securely are released tomorrow morning, so I will be anxiously looking at those. Then they will, we'll have a period where we can double check all our data. And in November, those should be released publicly. So typically in December at the board meeting, I will share all of the report card findings with you. They're more than just the assessment data. So that's why I think the report card is where we tend to focus. We have attendance data. We have assessment data. We have growth as an important measure as well. So I today just wanted to highlight for you a few things about our data. The state press release from the secure data release highlighted three things, ELA achievement, test participation and math achievement. I want to celebrate a few things with you. Almost every single assessment significantly increased over twenty-twenty-one. So we twenty-eighteen, nineteen is the year that we kind of compare back to as our last normal state assessment year. Our state assessments were canceled in twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty. And then, of course, last year, our data did not look like it has historically trended. So we have some significant increases both in reading and math at varying grade levels. I think one of the most significant differences between us and the state was our test participation. So the state cautions anybody in comparing your data to the state data because of the difference in test participation. So we, we tested ninety-five percent of our kids was the lowest rate of test participation. That was on the ACT. Our highest participation was in fourth grade and we tested ninety-nine point nine percent of all of the kids in our school district, which is, I mean, I had to double check the data a couple of times. It didn't seem possible. So I think when you look at our data, we are, it is very inclusive of all of our students. The state had different gaps between not testing twelve to fourteen percent of kids given the grade level and the test. So as you can imagine, those kids could filter out in any number of categories pretty significantly swaying the state data. So best, best celebration today, and I know Kim already celebrated from Four Corners and they have a lot to celebrate. We have increased our achievement significantly over twenty-twenty-one. We are close, if not exceeding our achievement from eighteen, nineteen. So we've, we've gotten ourselves back up very close if we haven't met the benchmark we were at pre-pandemic. And I think that's a really significant celebration on the state assessment within the year that we also had last year with all of our getting back into school and and challenges that we had on the non-academic side of what school looks like. So I just wanted to share some brief updates today and let you know I will come with graphs and charts with the report cards when they're released publicly in in November, and I'll be back in December with all of the hard data on that. But some celebrations from everyone's hard work as we get that untimely data back from last year now in twenty-two, twenty-three. Any questions today?
Appreciate it, Kate.
Thank you. Great work.
Our next presenter is Carrie Saunders, our Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion.
Okay, well, my update is really, really just wanted to share that Indigenous Peoples' Day is the second Monday in October, so that'll be coming up on, hard to believe, October tenth. Just, you know, honoring and recognizing both the historical and then the contemporary experiences of indigenous indigenous people in Native Nations. Last school year, information like resource sheet went out to the teachers, did receive some positive feedback back from that. So that's just been updated with additional resources and just tips for how to embed this in what I do in my day to day practices. So just starting points all the way from pre-K through twelfth grade with the whole continuum of resources that have been vetted and just highly recommended, especially from the DPI. We'll be doing a little shout out, you know, information on social media and then sharing that UW Superior is having a recognition at four thirty in the community. So that is just my quick information update for you. Questions?
I was just glad to see the policies we're going to go over tonight do allow Indigenous practices, non-smoking, but of the tobacco because of the significance important. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my report, Ms. Mar.
Next, we have the Budget and Insurance Committee with Brooke.
All right, I have one action item tonight. Gifts, requests. Administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants and bequests received in September of twenty-twenty-two.
Move to approve second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I have a discussion item here, preliminary twenty-two, twenty-three, the revenue cap levy projections. And then DPI revenue limit worksheet.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip around a little bit. Do you mind if I?
That's totally fine.
I'm, I'm gonna actually skip down to the third Friday enrollment.
Okay.
A little bit more data on that because the enrollment has still drives through. So we just completed our third Friday count and it was submitted to DPI on Friday. The new number that we have submitted for this year is forty-one fifty-eight. So that's the standalone, and then Casey breaks it down very nicely by grade level, by, by school. And she was kind enough to put together a third Friday count, looking at the previous, couple of previous years' data. So we have some context around that forty-one fifty-eight. So you can see that we have gone down. We have been going down each year. From eighth through to nineteen, we were down ninety-one. Nineteen to twenty, that's when we took that large dip, we were down two forty-six. Twenty to twenty-one, it was ninety-nine, and then twenty-one, so this year we're down thirty-five. So we have started to level out. Casey was able to put some bullet points together. Again, for some of these numbers, she wanted us to know that the kindergarten numbers in twenty-one, twenty-two were higher than normal due to families holding children back here. So what we're seeing is that we're getting some of those kind of, and then they may not have come through COVID. That's, that's not, I don't know exactly why, but that's just an assumption that we're making. We have eighteen more students in grades one through twelve. We have seventeen more early childhood students. We have seventeen more students opening one into Superior than some other districts. We have sixty less students that are homeschooled from twenty-one, twenty-two, which is great. And we have fifty more students that are openly rolling out of Superior compared to last year. So when we say membership, membership and FTE are two different things. Membership are kids in the seats as a whole. What we use on the revenue limit worksheet is an FTE, and that's a calculated number that we go, we get to by taking the four K in the early childhood. We don't, we don't get to count those kids as one point O FTEs. They're counted as a point six. So when I pop over to the revenue limit worksheet, you're going to see a different number. But that is because that number then takes into consideration those, those not one point O FTEs. Does that make sense? So the numbers aren't going to be exactly the same because we have some other calculations going on. Does anybody have questions about third Friday count for this year?
Can I ask, do we do exit surveys or anything to find out if there's a common denominator why kids are open enrolling outside of Superior? Do we try to find anything out to try to retain some of those kids?
I feel like we get this question every year and I need to know the answer. I want to say, I'm looking at Kate, do you know how Casey?
I do believe, I think it has depended on which group of kids and how we, how we, I do believe she sends something to them. I don't, like off the top of my head, I can't be like, here's what we send them. I do believe we have sent things out. We also have looked for feedback when they move other, like that category and homeschooling.
Sure.
Where we tend to land with, can we get some feedback?
I think primarily we don't get feedback back when we ask. Yeah, it's extra work. Sure. Or they.
We also communicate with high school families the best that we can because if a family is choosing to leave to go to an online school sometime, we want them to be sure to know that we do offer the solo program at the high school if that's an option that they'd like to participate in.
Okay.
So I do know there's that.
Okay. Okay.
I know. Oh, go ahead.
We can break down those in and outs by age level. We do have that. Something.
Okay. Sure. Okay. Okay.
I've heard like anxiety or mental health issues are a huge reason why kids will do online programming. Yeah.
Or other factors that are impacting their barriers to coming to school for a variety of reasons. Yep.
Now, these are the two worksheets that I'm going to go over next, or really the driving worksheets that we utilize for budgeting purposes. And this is something that we'll be working here from now until November first of the budget hearing. So we're still finalizing numbers. I've said this before, I'll just repeat it. Nothing is finalized at the state level until actually we're fifteen, so these are still all through elementary. We do feel as though we're close, again, because the one big component is that third Friday count. So that's a big, a big factor for us. The revenue limit worksheet is a worksheet that I use. It is, it is probably the most important worksheet that we would use in the business office. I've been told for years by mentors that if there's one worksheet that could get you fired, it's going to be this worksheet. It sets your revenue limit for the year, meaning it tells you what kind of tax you're going to be with. And it is a calculated worksheet that does not allow you to overtax. It sets a limit. So these aren't numbers that I made up. These are numbers that A D's made up. These are numbers that are calculated based on membership, previous year data. It sets a limit, steps strongly that we're allowed to levy the taxpayers. And then this in turn is the document that we use to produce the tax levy worksheets that we send out after you guys approve the budget. This is a lot of data. So what we've done is we've taken this data and we've pulled it over to a more simplified worksheet that I'm going to just switch to, and then I'll talk through it. This worksheet again is now taking the data from that revenue limit worksheet and it's just putting it into a more simplified format and then comparing it from this year to last year. So we'll start to speak to Laura's point about the per per pupil that were allowed. We've been at ten thousand and for some odd reason eighty-six, that's. That's what we've been at. This is a big piece of the biennial budget that we're looking for, for the next one coming up in the next cycle. We would like to see this amount to go up because if it doesn't go up, it limits our capability to bring in any more revenue off the tax levy. In the previous years, if you were not at ten thousand, I believe Superior's at ninety-four hundred, they did allow you to add three dollars a year until you reach that ten thousand. We've been capped there ever since. Going down, this is where that third Friday count is coming into place. Again, third Friday count though for the revenue limit is a three-year rolling average. And what is really hurting us this year is the fact that we had that year where we had a large number, I believe it was about forty-five hundred, forty-five thirty-eight, that has fallen off now. So now our three-year rolling average has gone down significantly. You can see it's down ninety-five. That is going to hinder the amount of money that we can actually levy, and you'll see that when we get to the bottom of the page. This is something that we've been planning for. We knew this was going to happen because we knew that our, our account was going to come in lower. So this is not surprise. However, going forward, we don't anticipate to see these large dips as we're seeing. So we're going to hopefully level this out.
Well, in two years of this three-year average is COVID years.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep. But we don't anticipate taking that two hundred and four, you know, we went down that two forty-six that one year, which is really what is kind of hurting us. You can see we're down ninety-five kids. There's a lot of numbers in here. We're getting some prior year open enrollment. We are allowed to levy on our tax levy. We have a. We have a, we have a voucher school within our district, meaning that they receive money out of our state aid. It goes directly to them. However, in turn, we are allowed to put that on the revenue limit to capture some of that money back. So at this point, we're estimating about $80,000 this year that we're going to be able to capture back from that. In other districts, it can be very high. In my previous district, it was about $400,000, but we're lucky that the taxpayers are toward about $80,000 at this point. Moving down to kind of the meat of the levy worksheet and where we're going to see the reduction the most is in this amount that we're able to levy. And I actually hit the jump right down here because you can see that last year's levy was at about 12.9, but this year we're looking at about a $10.1 million levy, which is again, not surprising to us. It looks like a large number. We were planning for it. What we are offsetting that with is an increase in state aid of about $1.7 million. So there is an offset there. When you're looking at that, and what I mean this number is, is that's the amount of money that we're actually able to levy to taxpayers that's going down. So the taxpayers are going to see it a less, you know, tax burden put on them for this year to help fund the school district. And then when you look down here, we, we factor in some other stuff. We have some in the levy debt, maybe that we have a debt service payment that we're required to pay back every year. There's a debt schedule for that. We have money that we utilize to fund our community ed fund. And then we also have money that we utilize to fund our construction, referendum projects that we have. We're keeping that the same from last year to this year, knowing that typically we would use that number to, to flatten out the bill rate. But unfortunately, with equalized values going up so much this year, we weren't able to utilize that to levy it out or to flatten out that bill rate. You can see that the equalized property values for Superior School District were at 2.5 billion. They got up to 2.9. We're seeing an increase of almost $356 million. State average was 17%. And I believe that's period was about 14%.
Can you explain why we have more state aid, given the fact that that 10,000 hasn't changed? Can you explain that?
That 10,000 is not linked to state aid at all.
Correct.
That number is just on there as a factor and that's why you're seeing that decrease on the actual levy amount. The stated factor is a very long, complicated spreadsheet that you can go look at.
It just sounds contradictory when we just said we aren't getting any more aid at 10,000, but then we're getting more aid.
The 10,000 is just directly related to the revenue limit. The stated aid is a calculated figure off of membership and at the $742 per student. That's what we're getting at equalization and state aid. So the, you'll see that it's not, it does bring down that number that we're allowed to levy, but it doesn't, it's not directly related to the actual revenue limit.
And we're able to get more from the state because our property taxes have gone, or our property values in this community have gone up?
Yeah, that's part of the calculation. I mean, we could go through this right now.
That's okay.
There's a very complicated calculation for it. There's other things in there, including expenses from last year, revenues from last year that were brought in. So there's just a large calculation with that. The equalized values is something that helps draw down that bill rate. You can see we're at 882 last year and we're at 675 this year. It's going down $2.07. So that bill rate is what taxpayers are going to pay for every $1,000 value of their house. So they'll pay $6.75 for every $1,000 value of their house this year. There is a, I believe. But I believe there's a big misconception that at the school district, we set that bill rate, that's the bill rate that they're going to see on their tax bill. And that's not the case. There's a lot more. There's a lot more things that this goes through before it actually gets to the taxpayer on their tax bill. While it is a large number, I just want you to know that we did know that this was happening. We've been planning for it. You know, we're obviously utilizing asset funds to help balance out that budget. We talked a little bit about it in early September that we did receive more funds from the state, about $400,000. That's helping that out. Obviously Fund 50 is doing extremely well, so we don't have to make a transfer from Fund 10 to Fund 50 to cover the food service if there was a negative account there. And we're utilizing less of a transfer to Fund 27 this year as well. So this is all something that we knew was coming and we've been planning for it. Now, in 24, 25, those will be different conversations that we'll have to have if they don't raise that revenue limit for us.
Thanks, Janice. Thank you.
So then the actual transfer of service, equalization, aid, equalized property valuation, and levy information will be updated on October 15th. The preliminary budget will be published 10/21/22 and 10/28/22. The final budget will be presented to the Board of Education on November 1st, 2022, at the annual budget hearing. I have two informational items. The budget hearing is scheduled for November 1st at 5:00 PM. And then Fund 10 revenue and expenditure preliminary reports.
Again, these are just preliminary. We haven't fully finalized the budget in terms of revenues and expenses. You can see right now, this is what we've so far have budgeted. We've spent about 5.2 million, we have about 51 million left on the revenue side. It's very early in the year, so anticipating a lot of revenues coming. And from the expense side, we are still tweaking out the salaries, reviewing that data. But you can see that we have, we have information in here. The total expenses are actual expenses that have come through this, thus far this year. However, the budget does need to be accommodated to include everything that we're still looking at, but will be done by those, has to be published by the 21st and the 28th, or through the second cycle of the paper.
Right. Thank you very much. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Brooke. All right, next we'll go into Policies and Rules Committee with Laura.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have informational item first. Neola Board Docs, Chris Petrito. Petrito from Neola Associates is presenting tonight.
Thank you for having me here. And I'll just say from listening to all that's been on, you've got a lot of great things going on here. It's, I go to board meetings quite a bit, so it's very nice to see that. So you should be congratulated for all you're doing here. My name is Chris Petrito, as was said. I'm here to talk a little bit about Neola for you because I know Superior's been with Neola for quite a few years and I think the people who signed on with Neola are probably no longer on the board, maybe some of you are, but it's been quite a while. And I know people say, well, what is Neola? Where did the policies come from? How did they get here? How do they design them? Okay, so I guess I'm here to tell you a little bit about Neola and a little bit about the process. A little bit about me, just so you have a little background. I spent my entire career in CISA 12. I started teaching at Phillips for a half a year and then I spent the next 32 years in Hurley, 10 years as a teacher, seven years as a principal, and last 15 as superintendent. And we worked with Neola from probably the middle of my principalship on, so I had experience working with Neola and their system for over 20 years. That's probably why they asked me back in 2019 and when I retire, would you come and work, because I kind of know the system. Last year, I served as interim district administrator in the Ashland School District. And this year, I'm back to somewhat of a semi-retirement and doing the Neola thing. Now, people want to say, what is Neola? Neola started as somewhat like a CISA in Ohio. It's called Northeast Ohio Learning Association. And they did a lot of the same things that, that the CISA's do in Wisconsin, you know, staff development, enrollment projections, all different types of things. They went into about 35, 36 years ago, a little bit about providing policies for their districts. And they found that there was a need and it grew where it only did policies. And over the course of time, the Neola kind of went to private, where somebody bought... Policies, how are policies designed? I guess the easy way to put it is you look at your policies, you've got state requirements, federal requirements, you've got DPI requirements, and you have a bunch of issues that you deal with as a school that don't necessarily fall under the legal category, but you need processes and how to deal with things. Neola works with a national attorney firm. They have two attorney firms in Wisconsin, school law attorney firms, running Lacy and Lewis out of Green Bay and Davis and Cuthaw out of Green Bay. They have a staff legal team that works on policies. So for each state that they work in, they have a separate group of attorneys that work with policies. Now, why do schools, why have schools and why is Neola kind of taken off in a lot of these districts? I think, I think all of you can probably attest to the fact that over the last probably 10, 15 years, the change in things that schools have to do has just been outrageous. You know, laws are changing all the time. There's new things coming up all the time. And as a district, as a superintendent, as a board, you don't, nobody has time to chase down all these changes because they just will land on your door someday. Last, well, a couple of weeks ago, the administrative code changed something with open enrollment that unless, unless you're digging for it, you aren't going to find it. And it could affect you as far as, you know, when you, when you allow, should we say, siblings of kids in open enrollment in automatically? If you limit some of your classes, special ed classrooms, whatnot, even if you have that language and policy and somebody, a sibling comes in and let's say it's a special ed student, high needs special ed, you have to take that student. So those types of little changes, unless you're really looking for them, you don't know. So what Neola does with their attorneys, with their clients, a lot of our schools and us as associates, we have nine associates in Wisconsin. We keep tabs on things. The attorneys keep tabs on things. And as schools, schools will call me sometimes, hey, Chris, does Neola have a policy on this? This is what we're dealing with. For example, drones came out, you know, maybe eight, nine years ago where drones started building and you drone classes. And there's a lot of, that goes behind legally flying a drone. Is it a legal thing that you have to have a school policy for? No, but a lot of schools were questioning. So Neola's attorneys put together policies to help students deal with that type of thing. Crowdfunding, the GoFundMe accounts, that's another one. It's, it's not a legal thing that you have to have a policy on it, but it's an issue that a lot of districts are dealing with. So a lot of the clients said, hey, Neola, we need a policy on crowdfunding. So the attorneys put together policies that are legal. They're very, Neola's very sure about their policies. They provide a guarantee. If you have policies with Neola and you kind of stick with their language, if you're legally challenged on it, they're going, they're going to support you legally to try to cover that. And I even asked the owner a few years ago, I asked Dick Clapp, I said, is, how many times has, have you been questioned on a policy or had to go? He said, one time. So that's a pretty good track record with their policies. So that's, that's kind of the gist of how Neola comes up with policies. I guess another good example, when, when things change legally, when Title IX came out, Title IX came out, I think, two years ago in August, a lot of districts were paying attorneys $6,000 to $10,000 to write one policy. No offense. I knew you were there. Okay. Whereby, you know, Neola clients, they got a, they got a policy that was approved by the Office of Civil Rights, went through attorneys, whatnot. Because as we know with discrimination, harassment, now Title IX, you know, there are certain steps you have to follow legally to take care of those things. So as a district, you didn't have to go look for those changes. They came to you. Now, what Neola does every year, they come out with two updates. They come on volumes, like, I know Amy was with the fair, well, what volume is this? Volume 29, number one, volume 29, number two. There's two updates during the year. When those updates come out, I will come here and I sit down with whoever is in charge and I will go over all the policies that are changed and give a little reason why they're changing. So they come to you, they understand what's going on. Some of the policies you're going to see tonight, Mrs. Starzak, he knows why those changed because we talked about them. Okay? So twice a year, you have those. Also, you have special updates that come out from time to time. And a great example was COVID. When COVID hit, Neola, I think they had three or four special updates during the year that had, you know, like, should we say a mask policy, your pandemic policies and all these different types of things and how to deal with that. Social media was another one. Schools were really struggling with trying to deal with social media because we all know social media is like trying to hurt cats. So they came up with a suite of policies about four years ago where districts could put a little structure to how they deal with social media. So not only, like, again, social media, you don't legally have to have policies for them, but there are big issues that schools deal with. And it's nice to know that somebody out there is kind of watching that and putting together policies that are legal for you to put out. So I guess that, that in a nutshell is, is how Neola works. And I mean, if you have any questions for me, because I, you know...
Chris, can I just add? I've worked in school districts that haven't had a Neola-type service and they don't have a process for how they update policies. And, you know, they're like, do we start at the beginning of the binder and work our way through? And that's obviously not a good strategy for lots of reasons, but you guys keep a pulse on state changes, federal changes, DPI adjustments, best practice. And so it's, you said that already, but when districts don't have that process in place, it doesn't provide for a very effective revision and updated process.
And for, for me as a superintendent, and I know my boards in Hurley, for us, it was kind of peace of mind where I know I didn't have to, I didn't have to go chase down and am I missing something that's going to come back and bite me someday? And with at least twice a year, Stu Waller was going to come and see me and say, hey, Chris, these are the policies we need to go through. And then, you know, and all the policies, a lot of them come with options. You know, it's not like it's set in stone. There are different options you can choose as a district that can work for you. For example, in this new update that just came out, one of the big deals schools are dealing with now are challenges to library materials. You know, you have a complaint procedure, but schools were asking for a specific one for that. So in one of the policies revolving on library, they put out options on different processes that a school district can use to deal with those complaints. You know, so there's no legal requirement that you have any step-by-step, but it's nice to have options for processes to use that. So I think they're very complete. They're guaranteed. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be working for them if I never saw a value in it. And working within that system for 20 years, I just, it's really nice to have. You know, and I, I was the old process too. When we, we started doing it when I was beginning of principal, we'd bring policies to the board and we're all trying to make decisions and we're not the, the attorney is sitting there and so we're making decisions, we're not even sure if it's legal. So.
And these policies provide a nice starting place. It's not like they have to be adopted as a whole. It gives the opportunity for the board to make some language adjustments.
Yeah, you could.
It was a starting point. Unless it doesn't, if it's with legal guidelines, then we've probably talked through that, but...
Do we pay a yearly fee to Neola or...
I think we pay like $3,100 a year.
Okay.
Which includes the two updates. It includes the board doc site that you use for policies.
Representatives coming to present to the school board.
This is for me.
All right.
And I'll tell you what, if there's going to be pizza here Monday. I may have to cancel vacation. That looked really good. And, and, you know, and Amy knows I'm always available and I spent my whole, whole career in CISA 12. So CISA 12 is my home and I want to make sure all, all the schools in CISA 12 are well taken care of, so.
Yeah.
They might have some questions in a minute.
Okay, good. Don't leave. Yeah, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, I did go through these, so, yeah, but Amy, I know you...
Can you give me a little more context?
Yep, so our first action item is the first reading of Policy 2430, which is District Sponsored Clubs and Activities. There is attachment there. Administration proposes the approval of changes to Policy 2430 based on Neola recommendations. Can I get a?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Okay, so what I noticed there was that there were language updates and that non-district activities were unable to use our logo or mascot or, you know, present that they're affiliated with the school district. Were there things I'm missing there, Amy?
No, most of this is just cleaning up language, so it's a little, yep, more updated, not really process changes. We already do a lot of this stuff already.
Any discussion?
I guess I just want to point out, this, what you have here tonight is part of, what volume are we on? Volume two?
Number 31.
Yeah, number two. So I will be bringing more policies from that volume forward next month as we, I need to work with directors and principals and Kyle on some of the other ones. So this is the beginning of some of those from that volume that you're seeing tonight.
And a lot of times I've noticed as the policy chair that they come in droves.
They come in, they come in kind of.
The volume comes out and.
Twice a year.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so.
Kelly really, uh, we, I mean, honestly, we were behind for a long time too and, and Kelly really started, uh, just to give her credit, really updating a lot of this and, and working again more closely with Neola. Yeah, all right, so any other?
I do have a question just about, so maybe I'm overthinking or maybe I'm not thinking correctly. But, so we have a lot of younger teams that sport the logo and the mascot, the Spartan brand. Uh, I can think of teams in basketball, like three-on-three tournaments, um, and those kind of events. Is that then where they cannot do that anymore?
That'd be totally enough to be up to you.
Okay. The concern, if they did do that, is if there's sort of any, I'll just, for an example, behavior that is not reflective of our values or our mission, then it might look as a reflection on our school district and really we don't have control over agencies that are not within our school district. That would be a challenge with doing that.
There is a section that says with permission.
Okay, so they would just have to, I just think about some of our basketball travel teams. They use their same apparel that they have for the travel teams or the SBA, but they aren't, you know, going through that, so.
I suppose if somebody used it, their permission could be denied.
Sure.
Can you explain the very first green on the screen right there? The substance matter is of interest to students, why that's added there?
Uh, for purpose of this policy, district-sponsored activities are typically activities which participation results in academic credit or subject matter is of interest to students in line, so. Say somebody wants those. Yeah, I'm trying to think of like archery, like archery or some of those clubs that we have maybe at the middle school level or.
Yeah, okay. Or, yeah, BSA, right? We just, we just had a, um, black student. And yet, yeah, and so like that was, that aligns with our mission of equity. You know, if it's something that's completely outside, that's what I read it as, you know, completely outside of the.
Tons of activities at the secondary level.
Right.
That apply to this.
Yep. Okay, any other discussion or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes. The next one is our first reading of Policy 3170, which is Substance Abuse. Administration proposes to delete Policy 3170 based on Neola recommendations.
Move to approve.
Second. Amy, you had a, I just, I wanted, the question, I asked the same question that was asked of me. Why are we deleting this entire policy? The reason is it's duplication of the drug-free workplace policy that we already had in existence. So we have some replication within our policy language and they're just recommending this one is deleted and we utilize the other one. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Passes. Next one is, uh, first reading of Policy 4162, Controlled Substance and Alcohol Policy for Commercial Motor Vehicle Drivers. Administration proposes the approval of changes to Policy 4162 based on Neola recommendations. Uh, what I had here was it was updating to reflect as, um, a representative was talking about the federal and state, uh, regulations and procedures, specifically sub D, um, on the procedures after an accident process and then the removal of forty-seven oh, oh, forty-seven oh one or four-one-seven-point-zero-one.
Move to approve.
Sorry, that was my discussion, I did that backwards. Other information you want to add to?
Just, I just want to point out, primarily the changes in here are due to federal changes and we've already been implementing these procedures because we've had to, um, because it's the law. So this is just reflecting our current practices.
Further discussion?
Ask a little bit about, I think it's called subsection C and that. Have you already mentioned this, Policy 4170, we're taking away substance abuse? And with the Police Assistance Program, can I just ask why that was being removed in case I missed it?
I'm not exactly sure, only in that. Molly, do you see that how that contradicts with anything in the handbook? Prior to the beginning of a testing program, the district shall provide training to all employees about.
Is it duplicate?
That's what I, yeah, that's what I wondered, yeah. Seems like that would be an important component of training.
And the first part is because it, that was duplicative, we just removed that in our previous action. So then the employee.
Be the employee assistant.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah. Where's the language in that?
Yeah, I want to make sure that that would be, can we just make sure that that is a duplicate?
Yep.
That, that's my only question about it.
Do you want to make an amendment to it?
I don't think I need to amend it, I just need to know.
Let me get clarification on why that's, it feels like it's already a part of the process and a part of, it feels.
And, and I don't want to make an amendment because I don't know why.
I can send out a.
Table that.
You can approve it next week.
Next week, okay.
And then, then if.
Knowing what you want as the end result, I can make a recommendation for the change.
All right, all those in, oh, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Right, that motion passes. We also have the first reading of Policy 5520 on Disorderly Conduct. Administration proposes approval of changes to Policy 5520 based on the Neola recommendations.
Move to approve.
Okay, so on Policy 5520, I saw that there was the removal of not tolerated to amend to the language of, as you can see up there, uh, maybe subject to disciplinary consequences, yep. And the rest of the language is up there, sorry.
This to me just feels like a much more clear message than it will not be tolerated, that it's subject to expulsion or suspension.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Um, and then Administration proposes the approval of the changes to the following policies that fall all under the use of tobacco and nicotine by professional staff based on the Neola recommendations. Kyle, can I take them all as one then, or you want each one?
You could take them as a slate.
Okay.
If you wish.
Yeah.
Okay, move to approve.
Second.
All right, so, uh, that's, uh, Policy 3215, Policy 4215, Policy 5512 and Policy 7434. Um, Amy, you want to give a overview?
Yep. Okay, you'll see this, all these, um, are the same, they just apply to different groups of people in different settings. It's the same policy across each of those. Um, it's a far more comprehensive policy than what existed and according to what. Okay, so Department of Health Services helped to put this together, um, to make recommendations to school districts. Say that again, Department of Health Services.
Yeah, the change I saw was like use of tobacco plus nicotine because.
With vaping.
Yep, so electronic smoking devices was new language in there as well. And then again, uh, appreciation of the exception of, for ceremonial practices as long as it's not being lit on or smoking, things like that.
Anything I question on the student one? Is, if you're on that.
Support staff.
Staff.
You want to look at the student?
Fifty-five twelve.
But the, the student one, the very first paragraph under except, exceptions is a child violation of policy, blah, blah, unless the activity is conducted by a staff member or a provisor, so on. I guess I don't see why that's in the student one if it's still only approved by a staff member to use for whatever educational purpose there is. It's not necessarily an exception for a kid or a student to be in that section.
What if the child's carrying like a tobacco pouch, would they be expelled?
No, no, I'm just talking the first about, uh, work-related or instructional. It's the staff member that's going to be allowed to use or have it or whatever. So I, I guess I don't understand why it's in the student section.
So it's not.
It's only an exception to the students if it applies.
Because it, it, as of a certain age, a student may not have any of that in their possession. Now, as a, as an adult, remember we talked about this once before? It had something to do with the age of the student.
This one specifically says staff member or approved visitor, which I would mean, which I would assume would be a speaker coming in for.
Which would fit under, which would fit under staff and would fit under facilities.
It's already on a staff, right, so I guess I just don't see why.
It's probably a copy paste issue from those other policies, so, I mean, it doesn't apply to students.
It just doesn't apply.
I guess why have that one paragraph?
Do you want to make an amendment?
Sure.
Can you get clarification from Neola? Chris, do you have anything to add to that? It seems like it, it applies to copy paste across those different. Yep, yeah, I got it, I got it, Anne.
Lynn, I have another, probably silly one. Oh, sorry, we've got to vote on that. Go ahead. Make a, make an amendment to, uh, adjust this policy to reflect the deletion of that paragraph.
Right.
Second.
I'd like to make an amendment, that's the word, the letter T is also included in there.
Where?
This paragraph, it says, oh, yeah.
Love the entire thing.
Like, that was a copy paste.
Okay, we'll clean that up.
All right, all those in, uh, favor, please signify by saying aye to the amendment.
Aye.
Opposed. She passes.
Do you have another one on this?
I did, um, again, it's probably me just overthinking, but, um, it's under the imitation tobacco product.
Are you on the student?
I am on the student, but again, it's on all of them.
Okay.
Um, and it talks about, um, shredded bubble gum resembling chewing tobacco. Um, and it talks about then off-campus school-sponsored events. Now, again, I have kids in sports, I'm thinking big league chew. Is that going to be an issue? Are we really going to want to deal with that with kids and teams that come? I mean.
I think we won't have to allow for the, you know, it's like those candy cigarettes. We don't need kids to pretend that they're smoking and pretend like they're chewing. Obviously, kids will still eat sunflower seeds or chew gum, but I don't think we need to allow them to pretend.
Right, I mean, but kids just coming with baseball, the big league chew, I don't think they're, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. But, I mean, a lot of the little kids do it, it's not, I don't think they're.
I just look at it more as a stance, that we're not advocating for chew or pretending. I would imagine kids would probably still use chew gum or spit seeds or whatever.
And so we aren't going to police it, is that what you're saying? Or are we just gonna?
I'm looking to see what the consequences are. I'm not, it doesn't really say what.
Again, it's.
It's just defining, I think it's just defining imitation tobacco products are the following. It's not saying like you're going to like be suspended or anything, it's just defining that's what those are. Not that they're appropriate, but, okay.
I get you, though, we don't need somebody saying, oh, a kid has gum, so.
Right, I just, yeah. So it's under, it's just defining what an imitation is, I think. I don't think it's saying that you have to do anything about it.
Okay.
Hey, any other discussion? Okay, so all those in favor of adopting Policy 5512 with the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And motion passes, I have no discussion items and, uh, that concludes my report.
I just want to thank Chris for coming tonight and hanging in.
Yeah, thank you.
I think we need to clarify, it wasn't just fifty-five, um, one-two, because we did them as a group, right?
Yeah, we voted on all of them, changed to fifty-five twelve.
Not, I'm not nitpicking, but I just want to make sure language is clear that we're approving.
As the minutes reflected properly. Yeah.
So we just want to make sure it's reflected in the minutes that we voted for all for, not just fifty-five one-two.
With the amendment to fifty-five one-two.
With the amendment to fifty-five.
Thank you. And that concludes my report.
All right, thanks, Laura. And last up, we've got the Legislative Committee with, no, I'm sorry, Mike. All right, we've got Personnel Negotiations Committee with Mike.
I have one action item, Mr. President. Administration recommends the approval of the October 2022 New Hires, Transfers and Separations Report.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion?
Welcome to our new hires.
Any other discussion? Hey, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion passes and that concludes my report, Mr. President. I'll take it when I get it. All right, thanks, Mike. Now, we have, uh, our last one is Legislative Committee.
I'll try to read quick. No action items, no discussion items, double informational items. Twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five biennial budget request, DPI recently released its twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five budget proposal. The proposed budget reflects the current needs of Wisconsin students, educators and schools and requesting funding to address staffing challenges, sustainable funding to schools, comprehensive school, mental health systems, strong foundations of student learning and student nutrition. You can find the detailed budgets by clicking the link. Next one, the article, the next article is following legislative updates of the WASPY website. DPI submits 2.5 billion state budget request for schools. State Superintendent Underly estimated the Department of Public Instruction, DPI 2023 to 25, state budget request for funding public schools and libraries. This is the official beginning of the state budget process for public schools. As this request sets the marker that the next governor will work from his budget early next year. Again, the full article can be found by clicking that link or going to the WASPY website and going under Legislative Updates. Um, the next two, the following information was taken from the Spirit Telegram Public Notice Section, um, September 16th, 2022. As a federal law obtained a certain rights of parents. First one is Protection of People Rights Amendment. The protection of people's rights of parents of elementary, secondary students. Certain rights regarding the conduct of surveys, collection and use of information for marketing purposes and certain physical things. Parents have certain rights to consent before students are required to submit to a survey, receive notice and have an opportunity to opt a student out of the survey and to inspect per request certain surveys. Each category of rights applies to certain types of surveys. Please see the full article to better understand the amendment to the PPR, which again is a Spirit Telegram. Uh, next one is the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. The Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act affords parents and students in spirit school districts certain rights with respect to students' educational records, which are the right to review and inspect, the right to request an amendment to and the right to provide consent prior to the district disclosing personally identifying information. Again, please see the full articles to better understand, uh, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. And I threw those in there because they're local and, and, uh, within our legal updates as far as the newspapers, I thought they would be important to broadcast here as well. And that's everything.
All right. That concludes the committee reports. Are there any comments by members of the public tonight?
Anne?
I have no.
All right. With that then, the meeting is adjourned, everyone.
Thanks for coming, thanks for staying two hours. We're not all of us.